The clock on the wall says six oh one, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. The first thing on our agenda is we will have an invocation. I'm going to ask Seth if he would say that, followed by a pledge of allegiance and Paul, would you lead us in that?
Our heavenly father, we come before the at the beginning of this uh meeting with gratitude with the opportunity to come together and discuss the affairs of the city. Heavenly father, we ask you to uh bless us with insight, uh inspire us with um making the best decisions possible for our citizens. We are grateful for all that that was given us and we are grateful for this city and all that it provides for us and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Counsel, I'll take a motion to adopt our agenda.
So moved second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our first item on the agenda is public comment. This is our chance for public to uh let us know if there's something that we uh have not addressed that you'd like us to or something that you'd like to comment on that is not a public hearing. Uh you have up to three minutes and we ask that you be, you state your name so that we know where you're from and your address. Is there anyone here for public comment? There will not. So you'd need to make your comments now.
And mayor?
Yes.
There are a couple of different items for the RDA, but on the inter local agreements, there will be a public hearing, just.
For the, yes, the, yeah, inter local agreement. Is that, I'm not sure which part you're concerned about. Okay, then you'll need to come and make your comments now. We're happy to help. What's that?
Questions as well.
We cannot do questions. The way the state law works is if it is not on our agenda, if you ask a specific question, something that is clearly laid out as a public issue that we're going to debate, we can, but if you ask me a question or any of us a question about something that we did not properly advertise, meaning we didn't know that was going to come up, then the law prohibits us from addressing it in this meeting.
So there will be no question answer on the RDA?
That's correct.
Except for the public area on the agreements?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh I would still like to hear the comments, though.
If you have comments, you're welcome to.
Well, my comments were based on the answers to my questions. So uh I don't know, maybe I can.
Give it your best shot, sir.
Be able to answer if it is listed as.
If it is listed as this, as a topic in our agenda.
Yeah, I think we can talk about it.
Okay, so my name is David Bernard. I live within the boundary of the RDA on seven hundred south. Um and as I read through the documents, I saw that there were uh proposed uh or considered improvements to some of the roadways, like seven hundred south and twenty five hundred south. My question is what kind of improvements are envisioned? And will they be designed to funnel traffic through the neighborhoods into the RDA? Or will the access be coming from one ninety-three or two thousand west to avoid the neighborhoods?
So uh to be very clear and transparent on the RDA, there, well, it's not a CRA is what they call it these days, but that development will be developed as after this becomes an area. Tonight, all we're talking about is is this an area that we can take the new tax dollars and funnel those towards utility improvements that could include roads? There are no fixed plans at this time because that would be a future proposal.
Okay, it also said in there that lawyer either owns property or is anticipating development.
Lawyer is under contract. They have not completed that transaction. If they do complete that transaction, then they could apply and there would be a later proposal for what they're going to do there.
Okay, and do we know what kind of development they're looking at?
I don't know if I can talk about that because that's not the art, that's not the CRA, that's a specific development that would have to be heard on a future agenda.
Okay.
I mean, I do, and I'm happy to talk to you one on one after the meeting, but I respect, I have to look at the lawyer at this point respectfully, that's not what's on our agenda.
Okay. All right, one more question. Uh talks about having a buffer between the main development and the residential. Uh what kind of buffer are we talking about? I think it mentions.
Again, that's not designed at this time. We're, we're really just talking about is this a tax increment area? Uh and I have to limit it to that.
Okay, so counsel and the mayor understands that in order for the citizens to support it, answers to those types of questions would be helpful for us to be able to know whether we want to support it or oppose it.
So let me make this statement. Um and I'm going to pause your time here if you want to say anything after this. Let me make this statement on what uh about these redevelopment areas are. This is something that the city sets up long in advance of any particular development starting. So while we do have somebody who's in discussion of what they might put in a portion of this, this is just saying that within this area, we see development that will have a specific need. For example, there are other RDAs or CRAs or EDAs in the city, uh according to the acronym that the state had at the time. These other areas didn't fully develop for years and years to come. All it is is a method for us to say within this area, we could use some of the future collected tax dollars to promote even more tax dollars. Today, this doesn't collect a lot of tax dollars. It's owned a lot by a nonprofit and so they've expressed a future interest to move that property. If that's the case, we would like some of the future taxes to be able to support the changes that would be needed. There will be time for us to listen to citizens and say, is this something that you, you know, are are in favor of or not? Those would be hearings on specific development phases. But this is just a tax increment area. It and that's, I, that's the limitation of what we're taking action on.
Okay, so how long does it take to see a payoff from the incentives that are provided to developers?
It depends entirely how fast they develop. In this case, we're going to get to this and I'll, I'll talk about it in great detail if we need to. But in this case, all we're talking about is there is an extraordinary measure to get access and we're asking for taxes um from future developments to help pay for the roads that would need to make, create an access and that would be off one ninety-three because one ninety-three is built at a different standard. It's a UDOT road. So I, again, I'm sorry, I can't get into the details of this, but we don't even have applications for much of this area. This is all future planning.
So citizen input for that future planning would be through the planning commission first?
They would be at the time of application and it could be either through uh planning commission or council meeting because council would be the ultimate approving body. But it would be at the time that an application comes.
And lawyer hasn't submitted an application yet?
They have, but it's stalled by this, this phase of the agreement.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Questions?
Jacob Briggs, twenty-five fifty S, seven hundred south. Uh mayor and council members and staff, I appreciate your uh the opportunity to provide comment. My comment about the plan. I found it vague in identifying what the uh reasons why the, why tax increment funding was required. I found it vague in the purposes to which the funding would be applied. There was one table that identified some infrastructure improvement projects. But the preface to that indicated that the agency would not be bound by any of the following, you know, there was very broad language that left the purposes wide open. And I believe you know, the public questions here today illustrate that the plan is too vague to be properly understood as to what its objectives and purposes and outcomes will be. And I think on that ground alone, it ought to be kicked down the road until it it really is fleshed out better. Second, as I think about tax increment uh funding, there should be a, a unique need or reason for this funding to be used. You often see these where there's uh environmental, unique environmental remediation that has to be done. Um or blighted areas that won't develop without a little bit of a push. If, if it's just the placement of infrastructure that's necessary or attendant to the development, there are other ways that future developers can be made to participate in the costs, the current costs of those infrastructure projects. And what concerns me here is that we're not really asking future developers to participate. We're going to instead borrow from future tax revenues. To that point, there was a there was language in the um RDA agenda, uh one of the common questions, how will this affect my property taxes? The response in part was property tax assessment will not be changed for homeowners. That's only true if you accept the premise that this property will not develop absent this plan. I don't think that's the case. This is a great piece of property. A developer's dream to have a huge tract like this without any obstacles in the way. The, the reality is future taxes are impacted. Future revenues that would go to Davis County School District will not be going. They'll instead be going to reimburse the, the costs that are expended on what looks to me, my inference is some kind of infrastructure improvements. Is that my time? Thank you.
Yeah, so um your statements are noted and I'll address those when we get to this item. Um but you should know that those have all been addressed in future, in previous meetings, actually. Are there any others? Okay, so I'm going to close public comment. Our first, our next item on the agenda after that is we have recognition for a firefighter. Shay McGuire has uh achieved the designation of supervisory fire officer and we would like to recognize her.
Mayor, counsel, thank you. I'd like to invite deputy chief Hamblin and firefighter McGuire. I'm going to give you a little bit of history about this, though. In two thousand fourteen, the State Fire Chiefs Association in cooperation with the Utah Fire and Rescue Academy and the State Fire Marshal's Office created the Utah Fire Officer Professional Development System. This system was built to recognize firefighters who have followed established guidelines for designation as a fire officer. It includes hundreds of hours of training, education and experience and prepares a firefighter for supervisory roles within the fire service. There are thousands of active firefighters in Utah. And since two thousand fourteen, there have only been one hundred and twenty-nine firefighters who have been awarded the supervisory fire officer designation. I'm proud to say that twelve of those one hundred and twenty-nine firefighters are in our very own department. Tonight, we're going to move that number to thirteen as we recognize firefighter Shay Lynn McGuire for attaining the supervisory fire officer designation. Firefighter McGuire's hard work and commitment to this process proudly shows her dedication to Syracuse City, the Syracuse City Fire Department and to our community. So please join me in congratulating firefighter McGuire for obtaining this designation.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much and congratulations. Next, I have the approval of minutes. We have four meetings from August that require meeting approval. If anyone has anything to amend or change, we'll discuss that now. Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes from August eighth, business meeting, August eighth, special RDA meeting, August twenty-second work session, August twenty-second special meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. The next are, we have five items of consent and I'll review these really quickly. We have proposed resolution R twenty-three dash twenty-seven adopting comprehensive edits to the Syracuse City Personnel and Policies and Procedures Manual. We reviewed this in detail in a work session and we're in agreement. Item B, proposed resolution R twenty-three dash twenty-nine authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the land leasing agreement with NC WPCS MPL thirty-three uh tower holdings. Next is proposed resolution R twenty-three dash thirty, authorizing mayor to execute a man amendment to the land lease with T-Mobile West Tower or leasing of property approximately seven hundred south and thirty-five fifty west. Fourth is proposed resolution R twenty-three dash thirty-two uh approving the Syracuse City Social Media Terms and Conditions, which was reviewed in great detail in our last work session and found to be in unanimous agreement. Item E is proposed resolution R twenty-three dash thirty-one appointing Heather Sacks, which is spelled S A C H S and Taylor Sacks to the Syracuse Arts Council. Uh is there any one of those that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, the one about the cell phone towers. Why, why did they need the generators?
Okay, there.
Because that was the question at the last meeting is what's the purpose of them if you still have.
All right, so I am going to remove items B and C, which both deal with cell phone towers. We will hear those immediately following the other three items of consent. Do I have a motion for consent for A, D and E?
Mister mayor, I move that we approve uh items A, D and E on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those pass unanimously. We will start with item B for discussion. It has been called into question that authori- or that resolution R twenty-three dash nine authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment with the land lease with uh tower holdings uh be uh addressed for discussion.
I actually shot the um not the applicant, but the company, it's called Crown Castle that handles their leases, the list of questions that you guys brought up last time because I wasn't sure. And uh he said that he would get those answers to me. And then I followed up twice. I still do not have answers to those specific, very specific questions um beyond my you know, my high level understanding of why you would need a generator for a cell phone tower. So uh it's up to you if you want to table it till we get those questions, um whatever, whatever you guys want to do.
So counsel, we have the, the authorization change is that we would allow for a generator at the foot of this tower in case of power failure. If you'd like to discuss that, this is your time.
I think one of our issues was the noise that it might generate as well as what, what the need was for.
Good point.
They didn't answer any of our questions and they were legitimate questions. So I feel like we should table it until they answer it.
Okay.
I actually agree. I, I think one of the things while a backup generator on a cell phone tower is would be a fantastic thing. I do think we need to get some clarity on whether or not, when those will be running. Are they just running during a power outage? Or is this something that will be going on, you know, to recharge the batteries from time to time or something like that? I think that is a good point of clarification.
Okay, so I'm hearing general consensus to table. I'll take a motion if that's what you'd like to do.
I think that we uh table the proposed resolution R twenty-three dash twenty-nine and the proposed resolution R twenty-three dash thirty.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, those motions are postponed for a future meeting. Item number six is just declaration that September uh is known in throughout the city as the American Founders and Constitution Month. We do want to support this. We believe that our constitution is a vital part of our government and we honor that and recognize that as a city. Item number seven, consideration for adoption of resolution twenty-three dash twenty-eight for city, uh for of the city council of Syracuse City authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a matter lease agreement between the city and the municipal building authority, um ground leasing authority to bond for a future fire station. So Steve.
Just wanted to go over this. We did, we went over this in a work session last time. Uh we're going to do two different resolutions, one for the city, one for the RDA. Uh the first one is the land lease agreement with the city and the RDA. The second one will be a parameters resolution for the RDA. I'll answer any questions you may have.
This has been discussed in previous meetings, but counsel, if you have any thoughts at this time to add, now is your opportunity.
This is very thorough, Steve. Thank you.
Seeing no more discussion, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the consideration for adoption of resolution R twenty-three dash twenty-eight of the city council of Syracuse City, Utah, authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a matter lease agreement buying between the city and the municipal building authority of Syracuse City, Utah.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, I'm going to take point of privilege and recess us from our current meeting and call to order our special meeting of the municipal building authority. Uh this is necessary because in this separate capacity, we need to actually uh propose and consider adoption of a authorizing the issuance and sale of no more than thirteen million dollars aggregate principal towards a lease bond. So uh call this meeting to order, call our first item as I just mentioned. And if there's any additional discussion, make it known. Otherwise, I'll take a motion that we uh pass this resolution MBA twenty-three oh two.
Mayor, I recommend we adopt resolution MBA twenty-three dash oh two, municipal building authority of Syracuse, Utah, authorizing the issuance and sale of not more than thirteen million aggregate principal amount of lease revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-three related matters.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously and I declare us adjourned from our MBA meeting. And we will resume with our previously uh begun meeting of the Syracuse City Council Business Meeting. At this time, we go to item number eight. Ordinance adopting uh or proposed ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen adopting uh the Syracuse twenty-five hundred West Community Reinvestment Area CRA Project Area Plan and Budget. We've talked about this in multiple meetings. We will talk about this in an RDA meeting later.
Since we've had some comments, I think it'd be good if Noah, would you mind? I mean, yeah, go through your permission if you could kind of go over the, the details of the RDA.
So.
Of like asking about it.
I've been to several meetings proposing this, so I'm going to just jump in and try and address some of the questions that came up in the beginning. At this time, there was the question uh that Mr. Briggs proposed that said that we should not use tax money unless there was some reason why we couldn't enter onto this greenfield agreement. And uh while we certainly could open this up to somebody who may want to do something like multifamily housing, which we've had interested parties in, what we are trying to do here is we have zoned this industrial. And to zone this industrial means that we've got to make changes to uh State Road one ninety-three. State Road one ninety-three is built at a higher standard because it's considered a state highway. And so the cost of entry is prohibited to ever start this land. And so this is the argument that we made with the school district. We also, as you should know, have made the commitment with the school district and they have approved and we have entered into agreement that we would take no tax dollars from any residential development within this entire zone because that would be needed because that would produce logically school age kids that would need to go to schools and they would need that funding. What it would take is up to sixty percent of future development for industrial only for a period no greater than ten years. And that period would be just to pay back the infrastructure development that makes this cost prohibitive to become an industrial site or a job creation area. The purpose of this is the city council had designated this years ago as a possible destination for future development of uh business and job creation. We do have a interested party that if this first phase is built would bring as many as three hundred jobs just in the first phase to Syracuse. This is vital to our economy. We need a more jobs here in Syracuse. We I, we presented to all of the organizations that we have roughly thirty thousand people who leave to go to work from our city, but only five thousand come here to work. We need more people to come here to work to support our daytime businesses and what a lot of our citizens ask for is to have some of those businesses that would require business more than just in the evening, like sit-down restaurants. If you have no daytime population, they have a hard time making a living. So what this is absolutely limited to the costs that are above and beyond normal costs. The proposed developer, every developer in this area would propose that they would pay their own cost for additional roads, but the exit point is likely to cost up to uh eighteen million dollars because um UDOT is going to require us to interrupt that street, put streetlights in, put acceleration, deceleration lanes in at their standard, which is eighteen inches of reinforced concrete where our road standards are normally less than that for access roads. So these escalated costs mean that we would never get jobs in this area. And that's what the city desperately needs. So that's why we've proposed a CRA. Uh we have not proposed that we would impact any housing. Uh any housing is completely uh out of the designation of what we would do. We have not committed exactly to the roads that would go in. What the initial proposal includes is an access point, which UDOT has only given us one access point, which is twenty-five hundred south. And it would only go as far south as that first parcel that's being sold. We are not proposing connections at this point. Um logically, there is a connector at four fifty south um on the east side, but that is a future plan. And logically, and again, that's also makes it difficult because we will require a development to put in at least one road. But it's not always feasible to ask them to put in two or three. And so um just to get to their property, but for safety purposes, we always require at least two. So that's where we've uh settled on this. Noah, if you think I've left out some of the purposes of why we sought a CRA, please, you know, help me out here, but we, you and I have gone to uh several, what, eight agencies now and made our proposal and we've had unanimous support from the sewer district, the mosquito abatement district, the uh county has preliminarily approved this. They, we'll meet with them next week for final approval. But um all of the agencies have been in favor because what this does is while this produces no tax dollars today on the land in question that is the farmland because it's owned by a nonprofit. Um and the other land that is owned privately is still A one and set in green belt, so it doesn't produce a lot. Though, so in the future, this will provide millions of dollars after we pay back this initial entry point.
No, I think you covered it well. Um yeah, I would just add that uh these these increment areas are a partnership with the tax dollars. We understand that the tax dollars are very important and we want you know, the developers are absolutely required to pull their fair share. And without this project area, we may not see investment for a minute. So we're, we're really trying to expedite those jobs in this, this industrial. those jobs in this, this industrial development that we want to have. And like the mayor mentioned, the, the taxing entities agree to this because they see that their current tax revenues as agriculture are low, and if they allow us to use some of that money, it will result in higher taxes after fifteen years or hopefully ten or five even when we get some more taxes. So it's, it's a partnership with those taxing entities. We appreciate, you know, we've had really positive reception so far and and the mayor's also right that we don't have the details of the specific developments, but we do have our ordinances that we will make them follow. We have a buffer ordinance that requires fencing and landscaping, so I know that there's some concerns about that. And we did rezone it to industrial, so that comes with some concerns for the residents understandably and um, there's that industrial zone is on our website. You can see what the list of permitted uses, but we're really going after like a light industrial. We're not going after like a manufacturing or anything like that. If you look at Boyer's track record of what they've done in the BDO, there's a lot of good kind of light industrial type uses. And so I think it'll provide a, a good job base for the, for the city and a good partnership with a reputable developer and the taxing entities have been on board and we've worked on this for, for a while and we presented with you guys a few times, but you know, so the, those, uh, boots on the ground, like specific questions that have been raised today, you know, we'll get to those when we have a specific site plan. We have rezoned the property, but we will, we will get a site plan application that goes to planning commission. It doesn't go to city council. But that'll be a public hearing and notices within three hundred feet of the property will be sent out and a sign up and all that. And then as any other potential projects come in, those will always go through a site plan as well to make sure they meet our ordinances.
I will also say that the city has heavily recruited clean industry. We are not seeking to, uh, we, we've avoided any any, uh, inquiries that would be for, uh, steel smelting or, you know, some of the things that are less desirable or produce some kind of waste. The initial uh, interest that we have in this is a clean manufacturing facility, meaning you have to go and, uh, get into a clean suit just to work in there. That's nice. We've, uh, had discussions with possible aerospace assembly. Again, these are nice jobs, high-paying jobs that we want our kids to be able to apply for and live here and work here. So that's something that's missing from the city. It's something that we are, as the city council chasing because we want to see our kids be able to work here.
So on, on that, the, the buffer thing, we actually earlier this year just looked at all the fencing requirements for all of our different areas and we just updated that too, to ensure the fencing all up between the two residential and industrial. It's good, like good heavy duty. I think we did cement walls.
Aries.
Yeah, the, you can, I mean, you can look it up, but we changed all that just.
And it's.
For these reasons, yeah, for agriculture and things like that. And one ninety-three is just a golden zone for being able to put businesses that will bring good jobs where people will come to the other businesses that we have and have lunch and keep them going because right now we are pretty much a hundred percent relying on Syracuse citizens to keep Syracuse restaurants and things like that in business. And if we want to keep seeing our restaurants fail, then we just, that's one of those things. If you add jobs to the city, the rest of your city will flourish as well, just because of the more income that's coming into it. People are now patroning the other businesses in the city during the work day and not just in the evenings or on weekends if we're lucky enough to get them to come out here. So it'll be a big benefit towards our, our local eateries and things like that and gas stations. That will help a lot with them and the fencing and things like that, that we already, we've been talking about this for multiple, multiple, multiple meetings, and we have gone into many different unintended consequences of what this area of industrializing it might bring with it. And if you review any of the meetings where this was on the agenda and listen to our conversations, we, the mayor is correct. We've talked about most of this in depth and in detail. Um, but it's, one ninety-three is the most optimal place to put an industrial area that keeps it more out of the neighborhood area. Like we didn't want to let, um, Greenworks stay over there because they want, they were becoming too large. So we moved them out of the neighborhood and that's our goal is to keep our residents happy and sane and not have a whole bunch of noise and a light pollution and noise pollution, keeping them up at night because your sleep matters. So if we keep them over in that area for an industrial area, then it's easier to keep our citizens happy as well as bring more jobs.
And to be clear, um, the, the buffer is, is much more than just fencing.
Yeah.
Also distance and things like that.
That was specific.
Well, and I, I think it's also important to understand that we don't we don't operate in a vacuum. Potential businesses that can come to our city, they will evaluate other locations. And if we have too hot, too high of an obstacle, such as they have to float X million dollars to, to, to put in infrastructure, we'll find another site that is, that, that is more cost effective.
Yeah.
Only things that can afford a, a ton of infrastructure.
Yeah.
Are more high density houses.
Yeah. So, so that's, that's one of the benefits of, uh, one of the big benefits of this RDA is we can still attract businesses without scaring away with high
Yeah.
structure costs.
Well, and there is competition between cities. That's one of the reasons that we need a, a system like this that isn't incentivizing rather than a, you know, a, a whip to beat them away. And so in, in this case, it gives us some advantage over if you come here and potentially we can save you this much money. We can help you in these ways. And I think it's really clear or important to be clear that this isn't taxing from our citizens. This is potential business taxation. So it's not even currently there yet. So I, I think that there might be a misunderstanding that we're taking homes and what you're paying in property taxes or anything like that. Maybe you don't believe that, but I just want it to be clear that this is, this is taking potential business taxes and returning it back to incentivize more businesses to come. So it doesn't take away from what you're currently paying into the system now.
Seth?
No, okay.
We've covered it.
All right. So I, I think we've addressed the points. Again, we spent multiple meetings and you can, uh, go back on past agendas where we went into great depth. The city is consciously seeking clean manufacturing and high-paying professional jobs that require an education because these are desirable jobs for our, our children. And there will be other jobs as well. But again, we want to, we want to make opportunities here. It's a part of balancing our community stability. So with that said, I will, uh, take a motion on proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash sixteen.
I move that we approve proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash sixteen and topping the Syracuse twenty-five-hundred West Community Reinvestment Area.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Um, okay, I'm going to move us on to item number nine, which is proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash eighteen, amending section ten dot thirty dot forty of the Syracuse City Code pertaining to animal control and kennel regulations. Uh, just for the audience's awareness, this has a lot to do with the county's future taking over of animal services.
No, I like their verbiage much better.
Great. Yeah, I think there was a lot of duplication of efforts as, as far as like, because you, when you have dogs, you have to license them with the county, but if you had a kennel, we, we had a kennel permit and then uh, it wasn't always recognized by the county. So we're just trying to make our make our, uh, animal allowances more uniform with what the county's doing and puts it actually a little bit more off of our code enforcement onto the, the county animal control.
Okay. My favorite part of this is E, where household pets, property owners may keep dogs, cats, small animals, including goats, if you guys didn't know that. Um, and fowl as household pets in residential zones, subject to the maximum number of cats and dogs that any one residence is regulated by Davis County Municipal Municipal Code. So if you've got a neighbor with three dogs and two goats, like I do, they're out of regulation.
Wait, are you saying you're out of regulation?
Yeah.
I don't have.
Okay.
They also need to refer them to the county.
Yeah, I know. It's a them problem now, not an us problem, but I like especially their changing of that because they specified it, of a total number and that I felt was important.
Any others? Want to make it good to be in uniformity with the county and clean this up and make it simpler for us. And I don't, we talked about it.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
I move, um, that we approve proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash eighteen, amend section ten third dot thirty dot zero forty of the Syracuse City Code pertaining to animal control kennel regulation. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number.
Animals and people's back there.
Proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash nineteen, amendment to section five dot thirty-five of the Syracuse City Code pertaining to mobile business regulations. Noah, give us a quick preface.
Uh, the state legislature updated some and expanded the definition of mobile businesses. And so we're just trying to reflect what the new state law says uh, to capture all of those many mobile businesses that there are.
So no longer just ice cream trucks is that.
Yep. Back in the day, it was just ice cream truck.
Ice cream trucks.
Sounds dog grooming, everything in between.
It's everything. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash nineteen.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Just on that, I saw a new vehicle that you can call them to come run your dog inside the van. They got dog running machines inside the van. So there's that out there too now.
All right. That seems strange to me. I will just say that one of the hottest trending items on Amazon, as some of you know, I do a little bit of business there is dog strollers. To me, I say, what's the point? It's why. You're taking your dog for a walk. Why would you put it in a stroller? Okay. So well, let's move on.
There are some old dogs out there.
I guess.
Fair.
Yes, just strange to me. Proposed ordinance, uh, twenty-three or twenty-twenty-three dash twenty, amending Syracuse ten dot thirty dot forty pertaining to exterior building code or design elements. This is largely coming from a new law that was passed by the state legislature and bring us into compliance. Um, I don't know if much else needs to be said, but anyone?
I'll just say the state is wrong.
Well, and I think that we're, we're good because we've covered our own development agreement. So that was crucial.
It's wrong a lot.
Okay, so I'll take a motion.
Jordan.
Now I'm not motioning. I'm fine with proposed. I move that we approve proposed ordinance twenty-three dash twenty, twenty-three dash twenty.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, motion and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. All right. Uh, so I'm going to take.
That was a proud nay.
That was just on principle, huh?
It was on principle.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I, I don't, I'm not going to say you're wrong. I'm just, all right. Item number twelve, proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-one amendments to Syracuse City Code section ten dot seventy-five dot oh-four oh, uh, pertaining to side yard setbacks in planned residential developments. This has been covered in our last work session in great depth. Unless there's further discussion, I'll take a motion on this too.
I move that we propose or we adjust the design. Oh, sorry, wrong one. Here we go. We amend uh, our Syracuse City Code, section ten dot seventy-five dot zero four zero pertaining to side yard setbacks in PRD zones from ten to sixteen feet between yards, eight feet from the property line.
Okay. Do we need to state would be ordinance?
Didn't I?
Uh, I mean, the, the twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one. Sorry. Yep.
A second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item thirteen, uh, this is more of an informative item, but a quick discussion or advisement of the adjustments that we made for the design or for the Syracuse Regional Park, which is in phase one, which is entirely based on our land trade. So. Preston.
Yes, we just wanted to bring the update. As you guys know, a couple of months ago, we brought kind of just a sketch review. We met with J U B and they have done the concept plan. We just wanted to update you guys on that. Um, and then see if you are good with us moving forward with the engineering plan of just this phase one and, um, continue our, uh, partnership with the school district.
I love how you put in here that they provided a rough sketch.
Yeah, it was very rough.
My favorite about that.
It was very rough.
The horrible drawings.
And just, just remember that we do the two fields to the west, the west, and theirs is the one on the east. We divided the parking lot between those. So that's all we moved.
Yeah, that flipping of a, a parking lot in a field just makes it easier for delineation. So if everybody's good with that, there's no motion needed. Uh, item fourteen is public, uh, public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment um, on a future item or an item that we dealt with tonight, this is your opportunity. Anyone? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to, actually, I'm going to suspend this meeting and deal with our other business first. So I'm going to move us into our RDA meeting. See if we can deal with this. First, I'll call the meeting of the Special Redevelopment Agency Meeting, uh, to order. And can I get someone to adopt the agenda or move to adopt the agenda?
I'm moving up the agenda.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we have a public hearing for proposed RDA twenty-twenty-three dash oh-two resolution of the Board of Directors of Syracuse City Redevelopment Agency approving the twenty-five-hundred West Community Reinvestment Area Project Area Plan and Budget. I will open public hearing.
Yeah.
You can, well.
Say hi.
This is the public hearing for you walking back in if you want to address the RDA. Yes. Okay, all right. So I will close the public hearing. And, uh, item number, the next item is the interlocal agreements relating to the division of property tax of the twenty-five-hundred West Community Reinvestment Project Area. Item A, proposed resolution RDA twenty-twenty-three or twenty-three dash oh-three, authorizing executive director to execute the interloc, interlocal agreement with Davis County uh, relating to the diversion of property tax, um, from Syracuse in the redevelopment area. Uh, we could take these all at once, so I'm going to go ahead and read them all. Proposed Resolution RDA twenty-three dash oh-four, authorizing executive director to execute the interlocal agreement with Davis County School District, same. And, uh, C is resolution authorizing executive director to execute interlocal agreement with mosquito abatement district. And item D is proposed resolution RDA twenty-three dash oh-six, authorizing executive director to execute interlocal agreement with North Davis Sewer District. And E is resolution RDA twenty-three oh-seven, authorizing executive director to execute interlocal agreement with Weber Basin Water Conservancy. Any comments? Yes, go ahead.
Um, on the public hearing, there was RDA twenty-three dash oh-two that appoints the uh, or resolution of the Board of Directors. Did we need to do that first?
And mayor, if we have to have a public hearing for the resolution approving the project area plan and budget as well as a public hearing for the approval of the interlocals.
Okay.
I think we have.
All right. So let's go back to A. Okay, let's go back to two A. Resolution of the Board of Directors approving the twenty-twenty or twenty-five-hundred West Community Reinvestment Area Project Area Plan and Budget.
I think you have to start that before you do the rest.
Okay, Noah, do we have anything that we have to cover here? Because I think we have, but help me if I forgot.
No, I think we've covered it all. Um, you know, you, you started, we get into the details here of what it is. It's sixty, forty, fifteen years. There's a cap of twenty million.
Does not apply to residential. The city is waiving their first, uh, any increment on the first, just to help this get started. So.
Yeah. Yeah, we have, we have the support from all the taxing entities. We still have two more meetings that we need to go to, to make it official on their end, but then we'll, then we'll get them all signed if you guys give us the blessing.
So if, can I get a motion for RDA twenty-three dash oh-two?
Move that we approve proposed resolution RDA twenty-three dash oh-two. Second.
Motion and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we can take a motion on the next different meetings.
And mayor, can we have a, open a public hearing for that separate from?
Doesn't say public hearing, but we can, of course.
Pursuant to statute, it, it was notified, noted as a public.
I love it.
All right. So I will open public hearing. Do I need to call them individually or can we call them collectively?
We we can have one public hearing for all.
So I'm going to open a public hearing for RDA twenty-three dash oh three, twenty-three dash oh four, twenty-three dash oh five, twenty-three dash oh six and twenty-three dash oh seven uh, pertaining to the division of funds uh, with the various taxing agencies that we've agreed to.
Are you guys sure you don't want to come talk to us?
All right. Seeing none, I will close public hearing and now we could take a motion on those five uh, divisions.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, um, I propose that we accept resolutions, RDA twenty-three dash oh three, RDA twenty-three dash oh four, RDA twenty-three dash oh five, RDA twenty-three dash oh six and RDA twenty-three dash oh seven. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I will now move us back into our previously called meeting and go on to mayor and council announcements. Um, Paul, we'll start at your end.
Um, the only thing I'll mention is the planning commission and staff are delving into traffic calming measures and and the best way to to deal with that. So they're reviewing that and they'll make a recommendation. Plus, once they're done with that, it might be a little bit before they're done with that though. That's it.
Seth, I currently don't have any tonight. Thank you.
Lisa.
Illumination is over and it was fantastic and we had a huge turnout bigger than we've had so far and we had of course, uh, fireworks that rival Disneyland and you can say I said that, I stand behind it. And um, yeah, fantastic turnout with our youth uh, booths and business booths that really, everything they did was centered on wellness, physical and mental and emotional. And anyway, it's growing fantastically and and thank you to everybody in the community that volunteered.
Jordan.
Okay, um, I I've talked to you guys all about um, the waste management is putting a lot of emphasis on recycling. We're going to see a lot more information on this coming out as we move forward on this. Um, they did send out an invitation for city managers. You should have received in your email that they want to schedule a a meeting with the city managers and anybody else that's interested in going to a informative session um, to uh, they're going to present some plans that we're putting together and want to make sure you guys are all aware of that. Um, also, I also want to just say what an incredible illumination event. The the booths were fantastic. Um, if you didn't walk away with a bag full of swag to help, help with your mental health, you you didn't, you you weren't doing it right. Um, the concert was fantastic, the speaker. Uh, when you're, when you're a kid next to you is like, yeah, yeah, I agree. It's like, okay. Uh, it was good. And then the fireworks. Oh, my gosh. There's a difference between a professional agency and a hobbyist. And I will always go with a hobbyist because it is their passion.
Yeah.
And this guy, I have never seen someone who can actually tell a story with fireworks. I mean, you you'd hear the the song playing in the background and there would be a picture in front of you. At one point over that they were doing somewhere over the rainbow and there was a literal rainbow of fireworks in front of me. It was incredible. I I would say best firework display I have ever seen. And please pass that along because it was incredible.
How did you feel about it?
It was incredible.
John.
So I don't, I don't normally stay for the fireworks because I got that Iraq PTSD stuff going on. But I do see him from a distance at my farm. And oh my gosh, that was the longest fireworks show I think I've ever seen in Syracuse. But, okay, so I got a couple of things for you. I'm going to call this Councilwoman Carvers Kudos. Thank you, best friend, for that name. Um, I feel like sometimes we just need to give credit where credit's due to our city employees. So this is a moment. I'm going to do that. Mr. Mike Mathis, everybody pretty much knows who he is. Let me tell you something about this guy. I can pretty much pitch anything to this gentleman and points to how far out of the park he is going to grand slam anything you send his way. He is precise, detailed, gets all the little projects done right away. And boy, does he take care of our crossing guards. Make sure that they don't get stung by hornets, takes care of the lines on the roads. He is amazing. So please pass that on to him. That he is probably one of the most incredible employees that we have and we are so fortunate to have him. Um, moving on to the PD, please thank our uh, officers at the, our school resource officers and our DARA officer for their first day of school pictures. Those were wonderful and very welcome. They are fantastic. Uh, and Miss Kara, look at her. I'm going to, I wasn't sure if you're going to be here tonight, but I'm glad that you are. So I'll just embarrass you in front of everybody. I don't know if any of you had the privilege of working with Miss Kara yet. She's, I tell her she's my new work bestie. She alightens the public information load on, like for everybody, like she like makes it easier for everybody to put stuff out there on their own police department or fire department webpage, website, Facebook pages, and it's just incredible. And she handles it that. You handle it like that. Like you are an impressive woman and thank you for coming to our city. Um, we were invited, some of the city uh, folks were invited to the Troop one ninety-one's September eleventh flag retirement ceremony last night. Uh, Officer Call and his lovely wife were there and the fire department was waiting on a helicopter, so they couldn't make it. We missed you guys, but it was incredible. I've actually never been to one. Um, and it was a little bit emotional when they retired the flags that were flown for service members that died uh, in Iraq. It kind of got me. Um, and today last is National Policewoman Day, so to Detective Beam and Officer Ashby, please tell them thank you for their service to our city. And that's all I got. Yeah.
Okay, so.
Oh, and illumination. It was amazing.
I think illumination has been covered. Um, and it was, it's a great benefit to our city and I enjoy it. Um, I do want to give one update to the council. Um, the project that's going on with the sewer district of moving the affluent point out to the Great Salt Lake has uh, been going amazingly well. Um, they've been able to cross the street. They've been able to get uh, the piping is in place. The building is largely um, complete. That will be the pump house to move that and it is a real landmark project in the state. It's getting a lot of kudos from other states about the ability to move water to where it is more useful and helping maintain, you know, the Great Salt Lake levels. And so if you're unfamiliar, so much of the water that was coming out of the the plant was just evaporating because it wasn't reaching the lake. It was just out on the salt plains uh, because of the deterioration of the lake. But this has um, this has gone really well. I was out inspecting the future building that will be the pump house. I have never seen concrete so secure. Uh, usually you get some groundwater leakage and they have virtually none. It's, it's amazing. Um, the quality that we've been able to get out of Whittaker Construction, so I want to shout out to them, but this is going to be a significant change in our area because all of that water will be recaptured and help keep the lake levels. I don't know how, to what degree, that's kind of an unknown. But the fact that we were losing uh, an estimated ninety-seven percent was just evaporating. And this is, you know, millions of gallons a day that gets, that could be recycled. So this is a big deal and and I'm proud of that. The other thing that I wanted to bring forward, Owen, I will say that also that board um, largely voted this year. We have uh, made some changes out at the plant to um, in our uh, purchasing over the last couple of years. So that board members would not need to travel to the national convention as often. And so many of us, including myself, elected to uh, waive that just because in the past, sometimes that was not as needed. And it isn't needed when we are uh, meeting with people about million, multimillion dollar contracts. But this year, we have uh, we decided to combine two years worth of work into a previous uh, it's, you know, discussion and that's eliminated most of us being a part of that, which is wonderful. Um, other than that, I think that I will look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.